Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom and rule of law for all citizens.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
President.
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 Here.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? If I could, I would like to ask somebody to remove, maybe I can. I don't know. I've never, I haven't done in a long time, item I on the consent agenda. I'd like removed and made item seven A or no, eight B. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yennis.
Move to pull item I from the consent agenda and make it item seven.
Eight B. Okay. Support. Okay. Any other discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone that Sterling Frights Halloween will be celebrated this Saturday, October 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00. Individuals, especially those with kids, will certainly like this. We have thousands of people that show up every year for live music, a straw maze, hayride, cider and donuts, goody bags, candy, inflatable activities, and so on. And the first 400 participants get a free pumpkin. So we look forward to seeing a lot of people out in Dodge Park this Saturday. And also, I thought it'd be good to give a quick update on road projects since we're winding down, thank God, this season. And it's been a long road construction season for sure. So if I can draw your attention to the screen, and we'll quickly go through this. Okay, so first, many of you know, because you probably have seen some of these projects in your neighborhoods, we have what's called our local road construction program. And we were showing you a couple of examples here because of before and after, quite traumatic. When you look at Ajonta Court, for example, and you look at the before and after, it's really striking. And these happened at about 30 locations across the community. Independence is another great example. I like to always highlight these local road projects because you can see how the neighborhoods are vastly improved. And what's most noteworthy here is we often get a lot of residents who take advantage of replacing their drive approaches or do something to improve their property once the road project goes through. So certainly, aesthetically speaking, the projects improve the neighborhoods, but also, to the extent homeowners also improve their property, property values increase as well. So it's not only good to get the roads done themselves. They're in very bad shape in these cases, but it's also good to see the improvements in the neighborhood as well. And then we have some other major road projects, like 19 Mile Road, for example. That went very smooth. It's a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. In fact, all of our city projects are on schedule or ahead of schedule. Let me emphasize, city projects. So 19 Mile Road turned out great. I think those of you who live up there would agree. It's a big improvement. Here again, some more neighborhood road projects. This in particular is Elmhurst Drive. And of course, the Mound Project. Now, this just started. The bad news is the Mound construction will go on now for at least two years. It will not be finished up until the spring/summer of 2024. So that's the bad news. The good news, though, is when this 200-plus million-dollar project is done, it will be one of the most state-of-the-art roadways in not only Macomb County, the state, but the Midwest. It's going to be something that everyone in Sterling Heights can be very proud of. And certainly, it's going to improve the experience for not only driving down the roadway, but the aesthetic appearance of that corridor as well. Again, I want to highlight, we have billions of dollars of corporate investment down this corridor. So to ensure that our major commercial corridors are not only drivable, but respectable, is imperative. So Mound Road's one example. Van Dyke, as you know, has already been done. M-59. These are all major corridors now through Sterling Heights that have been vastly improved. Now, I emphasized earlier, city projects. This is not a city project. This is a county road project, Shaner Road. It has been maddening. I share everyone's frustration with this. I live in the area. Sometime, I live two and a half miles from City Hall. Sometimes takes me an hour to get home just navigating around Shaner. I feel your pain. This project is nearing the end, believe it or not. The final paving is going to start on Thursday. It should, I emphasize should, be wrapped up approximately one week later. So it'll be Thursday or Friday of next week, assuming we only have a couple of rain days in there. And then after that, the final approaches have to be poured on the south bridge, south bound bridge, south of Plum Brook. Once those concrete approaches are poured, after the asphalt is completed, it takes a week for those approaches to cure. So that then takes us into the first week of November, assuming everything goes well. In that intervening period of time, all the lane striping will be done and the guardrails put back up and so on. So that's a tentative plan for Shaner. It is going to be completed this year. It will be done, but it has been painstakingly slow. In the county's defense, the contractor's been a very good contractor. Proline does very good work. They've done work all over the county and the city. The major challenge with Shaner has been the bridges. There have been four major bridge reconstructions on that section of roadway. It's a $6 million project. It's been a very complicated project. Throw in there a very wet construction season, also labor shortages and so on, and thus, we're well over a month and a half behind on Shaner. When I say "we," it is a county road project. So that's kind of where we're at with road projects in the city. The total amount that's being spent on roads, not including Mound Road, in Sterling Heights this season is about $16 million. We're going to have another big year next year. Thankfully, we don't have any projects like Shaner queued up, so they should go much smoother. So all in all, your driving around the city will improve greatly over the next couple of weeks. And I just wanted to highlight, sort of a side note on all this construction, we, I wanted to note, a section of sidewalk that has just started, and that's on Van Dyke. This would be from 18 Mile Road to 18 and a half. This is in front of the Ford property. This is the last gap remaining on Van Dyke. So you'd be able to go, well, we do have one small section on North Van Dyke that'll be completed next spring. So you'll be able to go from M-59 all the way down to 14 Mile Road on Van Dyke now without any gap, sidewalk gap. So we're really pleased that Ford was very cooperative. They had some major parking lot improvements and voluntarily agreed to install the sidewalk that was necessary to close the gap. So a lot of construction activity this summer that's winding down. And Mayor, lastly, on my report this evening, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act, for council to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And I do have one other item on my report this evening, I'm sorry, and that is an election update. Our city clerk would like to provide an update on the election hours at our election center, and also some of the changes that the county's going to be making that will likely delay the results of the election on Thursday night.
How about Tuesday?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. I'm sorry. That's why I want to turn this over to the city clerk quickly.
Ms. Ryska.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening. So the election is just two weeks away, on November 2nd of 2021. For those of you who are still interested, there is still time to register to vote, and there's also still time to get an absentee ballot. You can do so by visiting our election center, which is located within our community center at 402-50 Dodge Park Road. We are open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and we are also open on Saturday, October 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for voters' convenience. If you haven't already registered to vote or would like to participate in this upcoming election, you must register in person at this time, and you can do so at our election center. You can also apply for an absentee ballot online at mi.gov/vote, and you can do so through Friday, October 29th, to have that ballot mailed to you. Alternatively, you can visit our election center, apply for a ballot in person, pick it up the same day, and take it with you. Approximately 14,500 absentee ballots have already been issued for this election. We've received about 50% of them back so far. If you haven't already returned your absentee ballot, we, you can do so by using any one of our seven ballot drop boxes. There is one in the Circle Drive in front of the police station, fire stations two, three, four, and five. There's also a ballot drop box inside here at City Hall, and one inside of our election center. Ballot drop boxes are emptied daily, and all of those ballots are received into our system daily, and that is all done by sworn election assistance. If voters choose to return their ballot by mail, they can still do that, but we really highly encourage voters to return it at least seven days in advance of the election to ensure that we get it on time to be counted. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that, like Mr. Vanderpoel was saying, the Macomb County clerk has made the decision to not modem results directly from the precincts, as we have in the past. This decision was not made lightly, and it is in accordance with the recommendations of the Michigan Election Security Advisory Commission with a report that was published in October of 2020, and the Federal Election Assistance Commission Voluntary Voting System Guidelines Report, which was published in February of 2021. Both reports do not recommend the use of cellular modems. So rather than modeming election results directly from the precincts, the results will actually be hand-delivered to the Macomb County clerk, or the Macomb County Elections Division, to be read into a standalone system that does not have any wireless or internet capabilities or connectivity. So understanding that that's going to delay election results, we're very aware of, you know, election night, the results are highly anticipated, and everybody wants the results right away. So we've worked in my department to use our local election software, the version that we have. We will read the results into our local system. That system is also a standalone system. It is not connected via cellular or internet connectivity. So we will have a preliminary unofficial results page that we'll be able to provide to all of the candidates and residents who are interested, and that will be shared on our website, as well as our cable stations. And I've worked with community relations to make sure that we have that available. And we can anticipate that we'll get that. Honestly, I don't have an exact time. It's a guessing game, if you will, because this is a new process again. So I wouldn't anticipate getting those results until around 11:30. They will all come in at the same time, though. No, you will not see precincts and then AVs. You'll have them all at one time. And then, once we get that all done, we'll send those result drives over to the county, and the county will upload them onto their website after they've received them into their system. So then, they become unofficial results, and then after the county board of canvassers goes through their canvas process, they'll become official results. And that's kind of the update on that. I'm available for any questions. If anybody in the public or watching has any questions, you can always email us at vote@sterling-heights.net, or call our office at 586-446-2420. Thank you.
And Mayor, that does conclude my report, unless there's any questions from council.
Yeah. Counsel, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ryska at this time on election-related matters? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ryska, and thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. If there are members of the audience that have any questions, we'll, we'll take those during communications from citizens. So that, that comes at the tail end of our meeting, and you're certainly welcome to ask any questions you have at that time. But for now, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to recognize and congratulate the graduates of the Sterling Heights Fire Department's 2021 Civilian Fire Academy. We have a presentation from our fire chief, Kevin Edmund. Chief Edmund.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel. I would like to recognize the participants of this year's Civilian Fire Academy, and with that, I'd like to introduce Training Chief Steve Kohat to say a few words about the academy. He's the one that administered them. When we hand out their certificates, I'd also like to invite Assistant Chief Miller up here to congratulate the participants.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor, council members, Mr. Vanderpoel, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to publicly recognize the graduates of the 2021 Citizens' Fire Academy. This is one of the programs that the fire department looks forward to putting on every year. It not only gives the residents an opportunity to experience behind-the-scenes looks at how their fire department operates, but also gives us the opportunity to develop a relationship with members of the community that we normally wouldn't get. So it goes, well, it should be mentioned that the Civilian Fire Academy really wouldn't be possible without support from council and city administration. You support our community outreach programs through the fire department, and really, it's, it's your backing that allows us to do a lot of what we do. So I'd like to thank you. Really, without your support, programs like this just wouldn't happen. The 2021 Academy had 12 residents that were chosen to participate. Although not all of them are here tonight, each of them are going to receive a presentation, certificate that commemorates their, their experience with the fire department. What I'd like to do is bring Ms. Lori Ackerman up, and we're going to read hers, and then we'll bring up the remaining individuals. Hi, Lori. So it's a certificate of completion awarded to Lori Ackerman in recognition of successfully completing the Sterling Heights Fire Department Civilian Fire Academy, September 1st, 2021 through September 29th, 2021, signed by the Chief of Training and the Chief of the Fire Department. So congratulations.
So if we could have the, the remainders, Richard Bell. Congratulations. Nice job. Mark Brewer. Shoby Matthew. Ted Villanovick. Oh, who's not here. Joe Klosolaski and Mary. I believe that's everyone. All right. So please join us in a round of applause for our 2021 graduates. And also, we have Maria Russo from Community Relations, who's going to do a photo opportunity. It's completely up to council, wherever you're comfortable with it. But before everyone leaves, what we'll do is, we'll let you guys dismiss out to the, to the back to take a picture, and then anyone who wants to can stick around for the rest of the meeting. We won't, we won't keep track. Trust me. You're ready to go. But we do have a suggested action. So council, is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yennis.
Resolved to recognize and congratulate the graduates of the Sterling Heights Fire Department's 2021 Civilian Fire Academy.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Yennis?
No, but it's, it's a great program. I hope the students got a lot out of it, and I hope we are able to continue doing it on into the future.
Thank you. Anyone else, council?
Just real briefly.
Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I did this about three years ago now, and it's still one of the favorite things I've ever done in the city, is to participate with this fire academy. And Battalion Chief Kohat knows. I always talk about it, and I loved it. So congratulations to you. You guys won't forget it. It was fun, and I know you'll always think about it. So congratulations. And that's it.
Yes, so just on behalf of really all the residents of Sterling Heights, I want to thank you for participating in this program. We encourage everybody out there who, who is interested in, in it to look into it and contact the fire department or contact us, and we can put you in the right direction for next year. It's great to have residents who want to be involved in the community and want to have a better understanding of what our fire department does and have a better, a chance of keeping your own family protected in the event of emergency. So good luck to all of you. Thank you for participating. Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. One more big round of applause. All right. With that, we will let you guys all go out into the hallway, if you would like, and we will move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which is the consent agenda, with the omission of item I from the consent agenda, which has been moved to eight B. So is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda, the omission of item I? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is consideration item, and this is to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Sustainability Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the first meeting in November or the second meeting in November, Mr. Vanderpoel.
First is good.
Okay, so our first meeting is that Wednesday after the election. So was it Wednesday, November 3rd, I believe? So I'd entertain a motion to postpone this item to Wednesday, November 3rd's council meeting.
It's all moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item AI from the consent agenda. This is to adopt a resolution designating October 2021 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Sterling Heights. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved to designate October 2021 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Sterling Heights in recognition of and appreciation for the rich legacy and significant contributions made by the Filipino-American community. This resolution was adopted at the regular meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council on the 19th day of October 2021.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I would like to offer, Ms., Willie, if you would like to come up, would you, do you want to say anything, sir, through the chair to Mr.?
Willie, we gave you the opportunity. Do you want to say anything? We'll, we'll give it to you again.
Not really.
Not really?
So we can finish.
Look, we're not, we're in no rush here. You are, you're normally not a man of a few words, but here, here's what I'll tell you we can do. I can come meet you down there. I've got the resolution right here, and I'll take a picture with you, if you would like that. Does that sound good?
Better.
Okay. Marissa's still going, Willie, this guy is something.
Just as good.
Where, now where's this going to be? What, this is going to be in the news, right?
Yes.
What news?
Filipino.
Yeah, you're going to be, you're going to be a star of the Philippines.
Three thousand outside of Philippines.
Way better, because it's right there.
This is going to be on Facebook.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you, Willie.
All right, council, any other discussion on this item? If not, I'll just say real, real briefly that Willie DeShavez is one of our super volunteers in the city of Sterling Heights. He goes above and beyond, and he is a major proponent of the Filipino-American community here in the city of Sterling Heights, and really, in the entire United States. Willie, I had the honor of meeting the mayor of Sarsagong. Sorgasan. And from the Philippines, our sister city, about two or three years ago, came in. It was a wonderful time. We had a great, a great afternoon together. And Willie is just one of the real promoters of our city's rich culture, ethnicity, and diversity. And so we want to thank you for everything that you do, and I just want to thank the Filipino-American Filipino-American community in the City of Sterling Heights that adds to our rich diversity. So, thank you, Willie, and thank you to all residents of Sterling Heights, of every descent, but today especially, our Filipino-American brothers and sisters. So council, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Willie. Take care. All right. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Inks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Good evening to you, council and city administration. I just wanted to briefly talk about Oktoberfest. My wife and I came up both nights and had a lot of fun, and we were talking after the event, and just wanted to express our hope that the city will consider adding Oktoberfest on in addition to Sterling Fest as a permanent event. I realize that there's a lot of time, money, and energy that goes into these events, so I don't know how feasible that is, but I at least hope it's something that the city will consider. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under communications? Mr. Moreau? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool, good evening. My name is Mike Moreau. I'm a Sterling Heights resident. It's not very often that I am asked to suggest how to spend $19.8 million. So I take this very seriously. I set some criteria to aid in sorting out how to best use this money. First, the project should benefit the maximum number of residents. There are already too many opportunities to separate identifiable groups and pit one against the other. The project should not, for example, benefit seniors and ignore parents with young children. The project should bring us together as one community, not create an opportunity for disharmony. Second, the project should be at least cost-neutral, and at best, save money for the city and all residents. Lifetime expenditure should be zero, or at least a minimum. Third, the project should be an example of good stewardship of taxpayer dollars that can be added to the reasons why Sterling Heights is a good place to live and do business. My suggestion, surprise, meets all three criterias. I propose building a water reservoir similar to Shelby or Washington Township. The benefit of a water reservoir is that it stores water at night during off-peak times at a lower cost. The reserved water is then put into the system, replacing the need to purchase water at the higher daytime rate. A water reservoir deserves a serious cost analysis to determine feasibility. To summarize, a water reservoir benefits all residents, not any particular group. A reservoir should save taxpayer dollars by reducing water bills and not create a permanent net expense, and it would be an excellent selling point for the city, for residents, and businesses. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Moreau. Anyone else under communications from citizens?
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, my name is James Miskel, 44-year resident within this organization and this community. I was here a few meetings ago relative to the water bill program. I have five issues that need to be addressed, and I request that the council allow me an extra 60 seconds to get through this listing. That is your prerogative, and I do, would appreciate it.
Let's just jump right into it then.
Okay. My first issue, again, is about the information provided at the water from the Water Department and Mr. Vanderpool. I can't believe that we're writing one thing and saying something else. As an attorney, Mr. Mayor, you know if that ever comes up as controversy, that's the first thing you're going to put out, is saying it's said here, and you've been told. Mr. Vanderpool, I'd like to have a meeting with you at your convenience for a very short period of time and discuss that matter. Secondly, in the last council meeting, in my presentation, there were two council members that were talking while I was making my comments. I found that very rude, and I also found that very unprofessional. I've made many presentations to many large groups, and I've never seen anything like that. Mr. Mayor, I've had, looked at the council meetings for many years, and I've seen you call people out in the audience that were talking when people up here were talking. And I agree with you, that is rude, and that should not happen. Third, your comments, Mr. Mayor, relative to the meters, I understand and I concur. They're not viable anymore, parts are not available, but we do need new meters. However, your comment at the end was a typical lawyer comment. Deflect the information. I had nothing to say about your meeting six to eight months ago relative to the information. That, what happened six to eight months ago has been probably revised a dozen times. So what was published as a finality shows that it's probably not the same thing. Premise, yes, it is basically the same, but it has been diverted. And I found that very disheartening on your part. I dealt with attorneys for 25 years, and I'm familiar with the process. The council members, one council member mentioned about having people come to the meetings and speak. There is not one person that I've ever talked to that didn't say the same thing. You sit up here and look at us. You don't care what we say. Votes come through here seven to nothing, and once in a while, you get a five through two. It's obvious that the people aren't going to come. They aren't exactly busting down the door to get in here for the council meeting.
Okay, sir.
The last issue.
If you want to just, why don't we do this? So, if you are available, I hold office hours on Thursday mornings. I'll be here, you know, I can be here at 8:30, and I stay till around noon. So you can come in, if you want to come in anytime on Thursday morning, Mr. Vanderpool is usually here, we can go over this in detail, so you don't have any time limits, and we can get all your questions answered, because I've been writing notes, and I have a hard time.
I see it.
Understanding points one and three. So, is that fair? Can we do that?
Oh, yes. And in fact, I was going to ask that.
Okay.
At my summation.
Okay. If you want to leave the clerk your phone number, I'll just confirm what time I'll be here on Thursday morning, okay?
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mrs. Wright.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, with the recent move to being a more sustainable city, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention a private company that does residential composting called Midtown Composting. Ms. Davis was actually nice enough to put their information on the city's website, but it is a little buried, so I wanted to just bring attention to it. Right now, they're serving zip codes 48313 and 48312, but if more people are interested, they'll serve the rest of the city. For $16 a month, they provide a weekly bucket for composting and pick it up every week, and then in the spring, they'll give the resident 15 gallons of composting material with the option to purchase more. I think it's a great way, a lot of people don't realize how much of the waste that we have can actually be composted and used for gardens. So that was one thing. And then I also wanted to say good luck to everyone on the election in two weeks. I know I'm a new resident just the last two years, but I've seen our home value increase by over $60,000 just in those two years. We're one of the safest cities in the state, if not the country. We have a great police department, fire department, amazing parks and recreation. And so if that's something that everyone likes and wants to continue seeing, I hope they take that into account when they vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anyone else? Communications? If not, we'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Koshubsky?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item for closed session.
All right, council, any reports or new business tonight? Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So as Ms. Wright so graciously mentioned, I did want to encourage all the residents, it is two weeks before election, and it is our right and our privilege to vote, so I do encourage the residents to please get out, exercise that right and privilege, and vote. It's, I know that we have had the benefit and the opportunity to vote by mail or by in-person, just by delivering your absentee ballot if necessary, but if you don't do those and you want to vote at the polls, please do. It's the greatest thing we can do. We're so lucky to be able to vote in a free society, and I do encourage everyone to get out, and please use your rights. Speak your mind, use your vote. That's the best way to exercise and show that we have the freedoms that we have, and we can get out there and use our one vote and our one voice. So please do, and I hope to see you all again in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Anyone else, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, you know, prior to the meeting tonight, we had a ribbon cutting at the new DPW building, and we got a tour of the new facility, and looked at Phase Two, which is the old building, and what they're doing there. And it had a bit of a gee whiz kind of effect to it. It's an incredibly beautiful building, but the one thing that really caught my attention was the fact that so much input from the employees went into the design of that building. And, you know, that tells me a number of things. First of all, the city cares about its employees, and it cares about the health, safety, and welfare of its employees. It cares what its employees have to say. And we really are a family in that sense. And I really hope that this transcends into, as we go into this election and into the next city council over the next, well, four years, that the citizens as well are part of that family, that we will build a better city with input from the citizens. And I know the gentleman was up here just now and saying that no one's busting down the doors to get in here. We have quite a few city council meetings where there's not a lot of people here. I get comments, so I know people are watching them at home. I'd like to think more people will come. I get, like all of you, I get emails and phone calls about issues, but, you know, we can't, we can't make the city go forward on our own. The people who sit up here, and you can replace all of us, it doesn't really matter. The city's going to move forward based on what the citizens communicate to the city So I just, I just wanted to make the point that, you know, we're all in this together, and that every citizen matters, and the input of every citizen matters to make our city the great place that it is, and it will continue to be. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Thank you. Mr. Yenness, Mr. Radke.
You know, I just want to echo Councilman Yenness. We went over to DPW to cut the ribbon, and something that was said there kind of struck a tone with me. You know, our DPW Director, Michael Moore, said, "We're what makes the city run normal." Because we got to have a tour, and we have 7,000 tons of salt out back in a barn, basically, for our roads. We have all our trucks now able to be parked, once it's going to be completed inside, so they're not rusting outside. Just to see how much the DPW, which is kind of the unsung heroes of our city, do to keep our streets clean, to keep our sewers running, to keep our streets plowed in the wintertime, they really deserve a top-notch building, and I was glad to cut that ribbon. Then to switch gears to talk about the American Rescue Plan funds, I'm glad Mr. Moreau came out and told us what he wants. We held two sessions over the last week to hear from residents, and from my count, I think 14 people showed up. So, we want to hear what you want to do with this money. We have ideas, and they're out in the entryway of the city hall right now, so if you want to come down and put your suggestion in the suggestion box, we'd love to hear it. But this is potential projects for the entire city. And people yell at us, they yell at us all the time, about how we don't take input, and we don't want to hear what you have to say. And then we hold meetings, and no one comes. And it can be very frustrating. I know the whole city council came to the first meeting, because we were excited. We wanted to talk about projects, see what people's ideas were. Maybe someone's going to have an idea that we haven't heard from. I heard from a lady today who'd love us to get our 10-foot wide path from 15 Mile to 16 Mile on Dodge Park on the east side. Extend that pathway for bikers and everything else. It's a tremendous idea, and I hadn't thought of it. Someone brought it up to me. But if you don't get your word in, don't talk to us, don't bring in anything, it's like, we'll do what we feel is right, and then people will say, "Well, you didn't consult us." We're trying to consult you right now. Come and tell us what you want us to spend this money on. We want to hear from you, because this is for the future of Sterling Heights. So I hope folks come down to city hall and put their suggestions in, hope they email and they call us, because at the end of the day, these projects aren't just for me or the mayor or any of the council, it's for the entire city. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo Mr. Radke's comments. We had a gentleman today to give us his opinion as to how we should spend our money. He mentioned a water reserve type, and I would like to ask Mr. Vanderpool to maybe do some research on that, give council a cost analysis to let us know exactly what it would cost and what's involved in doing something like that. Also, I would like to ask that, how many ways can people submit their suggestions to the city? Is that on our website yet? Do they have the opportunity to send us their suggestions? Whether it be email? What sources are we using to reach out to the residents so that we know what they would like to see us to do with that money? Thank you.
You know, Ms. Melly Davis, our Community Relations Director, is in the audience. Ms. Davis, do you mind coming up and speaking on that briefly? Are there ways that, is there a landing page on our website for the ARPA funds where people can submit that survey that we've printed out?
Yeah, so we are working on getting, if it's not up yet, it will be up within the next 24 hours. We were just waiting on the renderings to come through, and so we have those to put up on the website. But if it's not already done, it should be within the next 24 hours. We do also plan on promoting that on social media, as well as in our city news that goes out to residents this week. So we'll be promoting that link in a multitude of ways, and that will be in online digital way that people can submit their desires for how we can spend our ARPA funds. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Schmit.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to go back to Oktoberfest and thank all of the city employees and the many, many volunteers of residents throughout the city that helped make that a successful event. I spoke with many people that, over those two days, and everyone had a fantastic time, and over and over again was repeated, as Mr. Inks said, "Please make this, you know, a permanent thing." So, not sure that that's going to happen, but, you know, I was really proud to be part of the whole thing, and, you know, with many hands, you know, the work is much easier, and I appreciate all the volunteers and city employees for helping to make that, as long as, as well as all the participants that came, and I don't think there were any issues, behavior issues or anything else. So, it just proves once again that Sterling Heights is a great place to be. And then on to the potential projects that were presented at the town halls. You know, I'm hearing over and over again how stupid or how silly some of these projects are. Let me reassure the public, these projects that are being presented are nowhere near anything set in stone. They're totally up for discussion, and that's why we're looking for input and other ideas. And Mr. Moreau, thank you for coming and really, you know, being on task of what we should do, and I do believe we should affect as many residents as we possibly can, not just certain aspects of the community. And you were very precise and very well thought out, and I really, really appreciate that. So, we want to hear. So, we want to hear from our residents. That's, we're asking, we're begging to hear. But don't think that the projects that were presented were in any way, shape, or form for sure done deal. They're not. They're not. So, with that, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Arkham?
I really don't have a whole lot to say tonight. I'm, you know, I listened tonight, and I just want residents to know that even if you're not at this council meeting, we're always listening to someone. We are at your service twenty-four-seven. Most of us, and just like you, get a lot of the robo-calls, and I would suggest that if you know that you've reached the right number, to at least leave a message, and I know any one of us will give you a call back. But because if something comes in and it doesn't say who it's from, it, a lot of times, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't you. It is, it is a robo-call of some kind. So, that, I would be mindful of leaving a message, and somebody will get back to you. The projects that we've presented, or we've at least presented at this time, you know, aren't going to be done tomorrow, and it might not be what the residents want themselves. These are just ideas right now. This money, I think that we're getting, as I always, I think of it as winning the lottery, and whatever we spend it on has to be something that is like a one-time expenditure, because it's not, this money is not coming in to, you know, refurbish itself later on. So, and it's not gonna be a perpetual lottery, so we have to be careful how we go and spend this so that we don't accumulate some kind of debt in the future. So, I can tell you right now, it won't be used for personnel, because it's not, that's something that we couldn't sustain. But other than that, I'm gonna agree with Mrs. Sarowski tonight. I think that, you know, in two weeks, you have a chance to vote, and certainly, that's what we want you to do, vote your conscience, and that's all I have to say. So, that's it. I'm here.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to start with Oktoberfest, as Mrs. Schmidt brought up. The one thing I want to say is that I thought that it seemed like the residents had an incredibly good time. The bands, I thought, did a phenomenal job, and I had the opportunity to talk with some of the bands, and I will say this, they were very kind, very generous with their time, and they were very complimentary of our city and our city staff, particularly our city employees. You know, I want to give a special shout-out to Bob Surgat, who is, works his butt off to make Sterling Fest as great as it always is, and it's not just Bob, it's really everybody in the parks, everybody in the, in the community relations, and everyone, all the volunteers around the city who helped make those city events the special events that they are. We certainly are blessed to have incredible staff that is always, I think, just, like, I look at it like they don't, they certainly don't treat it like it's a job, where they just punch in and punch out. I mean, there's a lot of passion behind what they do. A lot of them are perfectionists and want to serve our residents, and it's really, it's really, you know, I'm proud to be able to serve alongside these people. It's really special to me, and I think our city council would agree with that. So, Oktoberfest was great, and kudos to our city employees for making it the great festival that it was. I'd like to see it come back in some form or another. I think that that would be great. We do have Oktoberfest coming up this Saturday. If you have young kids, I heard from a lot of parents, we're disappointed that Oktoberfest didn't have more for kids to do. I know that. I've got three little ones myself, but Oktoberfest, I'm sorry, Sterling Frights is always a fun event. It's coming up this Saturday at Dodge Park from ten a.m. to one p.m. Thank you, Mike, for the suggestions, and keep, keep getting them out. You know, if you, I think probably the best way to stay informed as to what's going on in the city is to sign up for our e-news. Is that fair to say? Comes out every other week, a newsletter that keeps you informed. Any important notices, you go on our city's website, scroll down, sign up for e-news, you're gonna get those updates regularly so that you can stay informed as to what's going on. Look, I, I'm gonna just say this. Sir, I know, I know that, like, I'll put myself in your shoes, all right? I live off Shaner Road, and I feel like the county just does not care about what I think. Doesn't care about me, doesn't care about my neighbors, doesn't care about the motorists. When I'm sitting on Hayes Road, and Hayes is backed up from Utica to north of Clinton River Road, it's darn near backed up past Seventeen Mile, and I sit in that because I can't go south on Shaner, I can't get, I can't get to city hall without going a mile and a half out of my way. And I get it. I get it, because it seems like it falls on deaf ears, okay? But all I can tell you is that I know these six people up here with me, and I would say if you can find public servants, elected officials, government officials out there who are more accessible, spend more time responding to constituent concerns, give more of their time, have, are more accessible, if you can find people out there that are in elected office that are more accessible than my colleagues and me, point us out, point them out to us, and we'll emulate them, because we go above and beyond to listen to every complaint, every concern, every compliment, any issue, and work our butts off to make sure that they're addressed. And you're, we're not always gonna satisfy you with the answer. I cannot promise that. But I can promise you that between the seven of us, our city manager, our community relations director, and our city staff, we're going to listen to your concerns, we're gonna get them addressed, and whether you like the result or not, I can promise you, you're gonna be listened to, you're gonna be treated fairly with respect. And so, I do look forward, sir, to answering whatever questions you have and making sure that we do better where we could, where we can, and make sure at a minimum that you get everything you have, any questions you have answered. So, with that, I will say good luck to all the candidates running for office. It's an incredibly humbling experience to be running for office, and I know my colleagues and I encourage all of you to get out and vote, and there are, I guess what, fourteen candidates on the ballot, and they're all working hard for your support, and I think all of them want to be able to make a difference. So, I appreciate anybody who goes out and votes on November second or before via absentee ballot. So, with that, we do have, we are going to adjourn into closed session. As Mr. Kachubski mentioned, we will not be returning. And so, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved, supported.
So moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, roll call vote.
Mrs. Koski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarowski?
Yes.
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 Motion carries seven-zero. We will adjourn into closed session. We will not be returning. Thank you for coming out and participating. This meeting is adjourned.